Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Pistol.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Everybody. At this time, I'll ask for the approval of the agenda as presented.
I make the approval of the agenda?
John is under new business, that resolution, are you gonna, you pulling that?
Yeah, we're just gonna wait.
We're gonna strike new business on the resolution for the budget amendment, budget to the police salary. I entertain a motion second to amend that.
I made a motion to amend it.
Motion to amend, second.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Jean, second. Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay. I entertain a motion, a motion second to approve that agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
As an amendment. Roll call.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
You have your minutes for the February 20th meeting, also your monthly financials, I entertain a motion second to approve those as presented.
I make a motion approved.
A second.
Second in discussion. I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Brings us to Department head reports, we'll start out with the Airport Commission, Alex Kinlan.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you have the information on this, you spoke to the airport engineer recently, Dan Quinn.
Yep. I have a current master plan, draft that's open.
Right.
It's kinda what I talked to him about, talks about the runway lighting, that's what we're trying to do in the future.
Moving LED runway lighting.
Yeah.
It's in our near-term plans.
All LED, also a new beacon.
Correct.
Okay. We talked about raising that at some point. Also, I think bids are on Monday, coming out Monday for a hundred by hundred hangar with parking lots, and I think it has a safe room in it.
And if I can speak to that new hangar for just a moment, that is what it is, it's a new hangar, a place to put airplanes. We'll be working out a lease arrangement with a business operator on here who's expanding their business and needs more space and will, of course, as that implies, need more employees. I'll admit, I work part-time for Dawson Aircraft, so, you know, perhaps I have some bias in this statement, but I think that's good for the community, you know, we're getting some real good, take care of a family jobs coming in here as businesses continue to expand. So while we talk about the airport, I'll keep this short and yet editorial. While we can do, talk about the airport as a place for airplanes, it's a nice place for good jobs and business in the community.
I think Dan wanted me to mention there's also a 24-person safe room built into that, so...
You betcha, well, yeah, I mean, what can we say, in fact, tonight's weather forecast notwithstanding.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for Alex, appreciate that.
Do we still have a longer car for...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where is it parked at?
It's down there at Dawson Aircraft, they manage it, people call in and ask me to use the car when they're coming through. I'll, I'm comfortable speaking on behalf, you know, we don't just let people run nuts with the thing, but in fact, we try to keep them inside the city limits. Occasionally, we'll let somebody, if they gotta go up to Fairfield Bay, do business and come back. So we keep some restrictions on it, we don't really have a policy written out or anything like that.
Yeah. I was just curious, there was a couple from Indiana flew in here the other night, it was a couple months ago, I guess. And they had everything taken care of but the weight of the motel, so I took them.
Well, first of all, thank you, second of all, honestly, they could've called, maybe got a car. By the way, I believe there's a cab service either getting ready to start in town or has started in town.
I haven't called, I saw it.
And of course, there's the whole...
They're closed. They open and close.
They open and close, okay. Scratch, scratch the cab service. The flip side being, you know, Uber, Lyft, and things like that, rides are getting easier to find. So, but with all that said, yes, all they had to do was call.
I'm just curious about that.
Anything else for Alex, Airport? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brings us down to Animal Control, Lori, I don't think's gonna, come on up, Tim, Lori is not here, she had, they have a sick horse. They got 10 dogs and seven cats, and she said there's actually open spots in the facility for the first time that I can ever remember. So, I wanted to report that, Tim, I'll let you give your report.
Well, on last month, I picked, I took 13 calls, picked up three dogs, wrote one ticket, and like you said, as of Monday, we had space. I picked up six dogs today, county deputies, but they're all, they're smaller than one of the kennels.
Okay.
We still got, I think, like five kennels over there, the big ones, and then all the small ones are empty.
Yeah, she also said the pump, water grinder pumps working good, and everybody's happy. Any questions for Officer Pike? Thank you. I'm safe. That brings us to Fire Department, Port Chief Webb.
I don't have a whole lot to report this month, we had a grass fire on Pollyard Hill last Thursday, which wasn't a real big deal. All Red, we did have a call from All Red, they had a structured fire out on Watson Road, and they asked us to come out with a pumper, myself, Jason Edge, and Mike Curtis. We went out and assisted them pretty good, he's out there, but we assisted them, helped them out. We just got through with the donkey basketball game to help out with the kids with after-prom, that went real well. I know there's several of us that's very sore from that, but it was for a good cause. I talked with the mayor today, I just kinda want FYI, everybody, I know the Corona virus, everybody's hearing about it, I just want everybody to know that we are, we do have an emergency preparedness plan ready, we're in good shape, I've talked with the mayor today, I've talked with the county judge, hospital, and some officials in Little Rock. We're in daily contact, we're in daily contact with the health department, so, the best thing I can say is wash your hands. If everybody would do good hygiene, don't get freaked out, like all the toilet paper is gone from Walmart. It's like I tell the guys on the Fire Department, if you have a problem and you're rushing around and you're getting there and you're, you could create another problem. So if everybody is calmed down, we're on top of it, as soon as if something happens, we'll let everybody know.
I understand the toilet paper reference, got it, just got it, a little slow. Okay.
Other than that, any questions I can answer?
Easter egg...
Easter egg hunt, be Easter Sunday, 2:00, that's what we're planning on, things change, we'll let you know.
Alright. Anything else for Chief Webb, right back there in the back?
Yeah, Richard, DM, what, can you quantify prepared, I mean, is there a, can we handle 3,000 people or cases, or is it 200, or is it...
At this point, it's so early in the game as far as Arkansas getting into anything, the hospital was prepared, they...
Prepared, prepared as in?
They have anything that they need, medical-wise, gloves, anything, suits, anything that they may need.
Okay, but the quantity of hospital beds is kind of a...
We have a plan that if something major happens, we've got that covered. As far as a, the confinement area, if that's what you're talking about, yes.
Yeah.
I've talked with the school today also, so we can always use the school if we need, if it was that bad. So, I know we're looking further down the road on something like that, but what I wanna do is make sure everybody understands, don't get excited about this right now. I mean, it's always good to be looking, out for yourself, take care of yourself, good hygiene, wash hands, whatever you need to do, be prepared, we're prepared. If there's a major outbreak, the hospital's in good shape, they're in connection with the health department, they're keeping them at rest every day. They're gonna give us whatever we need if we do get in that position, like I said, we have places, if it did get that bad, that we quarantine people, we have a plan for that, yes.
It's in flux.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had on fire. Anything else for the chief? Thank you, brings us to the Parks Department, Charles Wilson.
We've been working pretty hard on the park the last couple of weeks, we got the key park cleaned up, got the big park cleaned up, grass, seemed like it just turned green as soon as we knocked the top off the ground. Grass just started shooting everywhere, so it's really starting to look good down there again. Guys got most of the leaves up, we're still working on getting some of the loose debris brushed and stuff like that. We cleared out some pretty good stuff on the river, got a little talking to there, take back off a little bit, so, but it's, you can see the river on the other trail, and we plan on trying to be able to see the river on the whole path. Just bite the bullet and get all the privet heads out from under it, and that'll help tremendously, we'll get all the undergrowth out, so, as we roll along, we'll do that. We kinda went over and laid out some stuff in the park, we were, I've been rolling around having a bunch of campsites, but then I got to thinking, right now, 20 campsites is plenty. They're big campsites, you can get, a family can have two or three tents in them, so we're gonna stick with 20 sites, see how it goes, everybody'll have plenty of room. It'll cut down costs on fire pits and all that stuff, so, and I mean, like I said, this is a trial thing, we'll see how it goes, 20 sites, and that's 120 people on an average family.
Yeah.
If they're awful, so that's a lot of people in a small...
Wednesday the first, we'll do that walkthrough, Wednesday the first, we'll come back the next meeting and say, you know, but here's what we've got, here's the borders, and we got 20 sites, and here's the rules, and go, then we'll get some approval for that.
We have the borders marked in, and we actually outpainted the ground for the sites so I could see how big they was, I mean, they're, they're good-sized sites with plenty of room. If you got your kayaks and stuff, you still got plenty of room to have your sets of kayaks, big wide 20-foot trails between all the campsites and stuff, so, I mean, if the Boy Scouts come out, I mean, they're gonna have the whole thing. So if there's 100 Boy Scouts and they got 100 of those little tents, it's really not gonna take up that much space, and they're more of a... If the Boy Scouts come out, they'll take precedence over the whole thing, if they decide to do a camperey or something, it's theirs for two or three days, and they do, their badges and all that stuff.
Okay. Anything else on the park, or does anybody have questions for Charles? Yeah, we'll lay that out, Wednesday, and whoever on the council wants to look at it, they go look at it. Brings us to Police Department, Chief Willoughby.
We had a fairly good month, last month, our property checks and extra patrols went up, almost 300 property checks and extra patrols. We got about, I think it was seven or eight felony cases that we filed and everything. We had five new investigations opened and six of them closed, so, we're gonna make a little headway there. I wanted to bring to y'all's attention a couple of things that Dana brought to my attention. Number one was Eric is gonna retire March 20th, so after he retires, the way I've got this all done with the, with the pay and everything, everybody moves up, you know. When Eric retires, Scott will move up into his pay grade, and then the next person will move up into the next pay grade and everything. Apparently, I guess I'm supposed to get that approved?
Yeah, mostly on the night, that was on the agenda down there.
Well, no, this is, the agenda, the agenda was I was gonna change from 104 down to 107, the same, just the 14.95 an hour, okay? I was gonna do that, which, we can do that at a later date, you know, when we do our budget for next time, but everybody kinda moves up into a pace.
Oh, okay.
Now, I mean, when he retires, everybody moves up, that's kinda how we got it planned, okay? But on the other thing, I'm just gonna wait and do that, when we do our budget, you know, and try to get that approved later on.
And what are you, what are you asking for, you're just letting us know that everybody's...
Everybody's gonna be moving up.
And you're just gonna...
I'm just, Dana told me, I think, that y'all needed to approve that, I thought it all mattered, everybody was mad.
Well, they will, I think, I think on the other issue, on the approval is the canine.
Well, this, that's the other thing I was gonna bring up, what we did on the canine, we raised money at the beginning for the dog and for a insert to keep, you know, the truck from getting all messed up and everything. At first, our insert was like $5,000 or something. We raised more than that for the insert, but we got another insert for $2,589.90 to really insert.
Yeah, even though it was, the canine fund is donated, but, but you did, you did spend $2,589.90, you did go over that 2,000, even though the money's there.
I went over the 2,000 deal there.
You need to get, she said get approval from the council for that, so, you need a motion and a second to approve that additional $589.90 for that canine insert.
Motion, second.
Motion and second, any other discussion on that? I'll ask for a roll call, vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Yeah.
And guys, I apologize for that, I mean, I was under the impression in my mind that it's donation, we've been donations for that purpose.
Right, it's donated, but, when in doubt, call Dana Malone.
Anytime money comes into the city and goes back out, it has to be approved.
And, yeah, she brought that to my attention there on that, so...
Yeah, mine too.
We're good on that, I won't, I won't do that again, I promise, but guys, other than that, that's all I've got.
I, you know, just like I said, like you said, the, you know, it comes in, goes out, somebody's gotta see it, know it was raised for that, but in the past, you've come to ask for forgiveness before because you paid more, so, try to remember that next time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did that.
So, on your, so you're moving everybody up to the next slot, so are you gonna hire someone else?
Yes, I mean, we're gonna hire somebody else, and they'll be at this low bar, 14 and 18 an hour is what it comes up to. And the whole purpose of me trying to get a, which we'll talk about that later on in the year, but the resolution part of it, I was trying to get us up to where I get applicants putting in, because if you got a low ball like this at 29, I think it's 29.9 is what they start out at, if you got somebody with 15 years' experience putting in for this job, they kinda wanna love more, you know what I'm saying? So, the way I had it done up was they were starting out at 31, too, and that was from 104 down, everybody was making 31, too.
Okay.
You know, so, I mean, but like I said, we'll talk about that later on in the year, and hopefully we can make that happen, but we'll do it later on in the... That's all I've got.
You getting that?
Sorry.
Anything else for the chief?
I got one quick question, and I'm gonna, I'm telling everybody too, since my coat red alert's going off, so if you got cell phones that have a weather alert and get ready for the, at least vibration of it or whatever. I'm thinking possibly when, when a person moves up on the scale, if they were at a lower salary, and then when they moved up, they'd make a...
You need a motion and a second to allow that?
That, that might be the reason why we would have to vote on that, it's not necessarily a person decision or a personnel decision, it's more of a budget decision.
A budget decision.
Now, can we wait till next month to do, or do we need to do it in March? When is he gonna take over those duties, Officer Solomon, will he do that the following week or the next day, or whenever he goes on?
He's already in the process of doing that, because that's kinda how we do things, we try to get everybody...
Transition.
Transition.
So, do we, so...
Chief, do we need, do we need to do that so that we've got the eyes...
I wished you would.
...pissed across, I don't, I don't have a problem because I think it's just meeting the letter of the law, not so much on the person or the position, but the money side of it. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve that salary increase for that position to be filled after Officer Coons's retirement.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
We're just talking about one position, or are we talking about all positions?
Well, everybody, everybody moves up.
So everybody moves up?
Everybody move up, but...
Same pay but a different name?
Yeah, it's just a different number, and that, if you did that, we probably wouldn't have to do it, 'cause it's not a change in the, in the money part.
Well, it, really, it is a change, see Eric, if you'll, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about this, see Eric right now is making 16.68 an hour, okay? Scott's making 16.57, so Scott will move up into the 16.68.
Well, then the next person...
The next person will move up into Scott's.
So they'll do the 16.52?
Yeah, and then so on.
Okay, well, hang on, let me just, let me just redact that, change that, and I still think, oh, Chad, it's, it's really, even if the people move, the money doesn't.
Yeah, the positions, yeah, these positions are not tied to people, they're tied, they're tied to titles. If you got folks that are just, if you're just promoting from within, and I don't think you can do anything. What we were discussing was a total restructure of the system.
Yeah, but we're gonna come back, okay, so we're good, so we're good.
I don't think you're okay, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you, that clarified that, chief, I, you know, I'm good at mucking that up. Well, I understand it now.
Hey, make sure you cover yourself. Anything else for the chief? Okay, thank you. Brings us back to the Street Department, Charles Wilson.
I don't even know where to begin, really, okay, the city does not do junk begone. Chamber funds junk begone, they always funded it, and, and they're short of money, and they made the decision last year that they were a little low on money to not do junk begone. So, and I've kinda proposed a white goods, if anybody has steel, washers, dryers, microwaves, hot water heaters, old tin off their building, old fences, old gates, anything that's steel, they can put it out on the side of the road, and we'll have these people that hauls crap, will come and pick this up and make money off of it. They won't be interrupting anybody, they won't be in their yards or in, it'll be, you get it out to the road, and then that will help me, after that's done, we'll do that April the 17th and 18th, and that will help me figure out a way to get the rest of the money to maybe do a junk begone after that. And then we won't be tied into all this heavy weight that we've gotta pay for at the transfer station.
Trying to save money to get rid of the heavy stuff that somebody at one can take and sell that we don't have time to mess with, then we can come back for the...
The junk begone in a later day.
Scraps.
And help get the wood and the lumber and all that stuff. So that will, that will relieve a lot off of my budget if we can't figure out how to get some money from the Chamber, so...
Yeah, you're looking at within, like maybe small tools and equipment, you know, maybe, you know, but see where you're at after this 17th and 18th.
And, and we're still not picking up brush, we didn't cut that out, ADQ cut that out for us. They stopped us, what we're doing, and we can only have 50 cubic yards, which is 50 backhoe buckets on the yard. So, and we're still way out from being in compliance, we gave this stuff away last year, got rid of a lot of it, but I mean, we still have fencing to put up, we still have probably, I'm gonna say roughly 3,000 cubic yards still down there that we have to give out to the public, we're gonna start doing that on Fridays again, if we somebody there to load. But we can't do brush until we get this down and come into compliance, I mean, the last thing we need is a fine or have to haul this stuff to Mayflower or stuff like that.
Our last ordinance, it has a storm clause, and if we deem, if a storm blows through, we have it, that's the only way we can take it.
Yeah, everybody, every city, I guess municipality, has a form of emergency, so they declare a disaster, then they pick us out a spot, and then we can work with it from there. But as far as we've never cut it out, we just can't, and until we get it into compliance, we, we're just in a tight spot, I mean, even with the leaves and everything, 'cause, and she comes by on a regular basis. I mean, she checks the water department, and when she comes by that slab and we're not making headway, then she starts writing letters and making phone calls, and so, I mean, we're, we're working hard trying to get this in compliance, I mean, we've got rid of a lot of mulch in a short period, and I'm hoping with this garden season coming in, we can get the rest of it cleaned up and maybe get into this.
Let me cut you off, you're talking about Free Fridays, you're talking about tomorrow, are we gonna start maybe next, start tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
On free mulch, on Fridays, you'll have somebody to load you.
We've got some lined up, so we're gonna have to get that over into the pile, see once that removed and placed and rolled and fixed, so I'll have somebody every Friday down there working on fixing all of that. But we still have a fence, I mean, we have 400-foot of chain link fence we got put up, that's 40 posts, there's four 10-foot gates, so it's gonna set me back. I have some of the supplies, and I have some of the old chain link fence, and I will do everything I can to save every dime I can from old washed-out fences, from the softball fields and stuff.
You still need that top rail.
And then I'll still have to buy 400-foot of top rail for this, and...
Well, that stuff I had ain't gonna work.
To get it all into compliance, but it's a slow go, I mean, we're a small crew, we're trying to do streets, we're trying to build parks, we're trying to do softball, I mean, you got four guys that's trying to keep everything running, and sometimes it gets complicated, we just, we're here, there, and there, and here, so...
You need a motion and a second to speed it up?
Yes.
Okay, so Free Fridays mulch for sure.
Yes, and we'll start that tomorrow, weather permitting, well, I mean, we have a cab tractor, so I don't see any problem with them being down there sitting in a cab or a tractor waiting to load mulch if somebody wants to unload it in the rain, and there'll be several, I mean, garden season's coming up, and I'm hoping with this garden season, that will be like last year. I mean, we moved lots of mulch last year, but we didn't even get an ad void for doing mulch, it was, you need to get rid of the rest of this. There was no, "thank you for doing a great job."
We gotta comply with the law, so...
Yes.
What about a...
We've got a lot of the old, the old tornado stuff, we've been working on it in between everything, we've got a lot of it pushed up, as soon as we get a chance, we'll be burning that again. But I don't really like to burn during the summer, I like burning during the wintertime, 'cause it's kinda growed up down there on the river.
Me too.
And I don't want it to get away from us, so, I mean, we'll go down and push some stuff up and get it gathered up, but I'm not gonna burn it until we start getting into rainy, snowy weather again, and I don't have to worry about it getting out and going up the backside of Honey Hills and...
The sleeves you put in for downtown, replace that pole?
Yes.
Appreciate Petal Gene's help on that, and Mallard's gonna help us with the concrete when the next, when they're pouring, we can top it off.
Soon as they wanna pour, we'll pour, I'll be down there, that way I can make sure it's up level with the highways and I can do all of that.
City's putting in some metal poles, for information, downtown, replacing, like the one in front of Burnet's, or whatever it is now, Burnet's Five and Dime, but that pole is broken, and it's, so we've got permission to go ahead and put a metal pole in there and put an arm on it, and maybe start pulling some of that phone line back away from, over the sidewalk, cosmetically it'll look better.
It will, and other than that, it was, and I guess I'm gonna start reopening the bids and rebid the streets last year, try to get that rolling, try to get that going as quick as possible. A lot of my striping and stuff is starting to fade out, so if we can get them covered, then we can start making plans of if I'm gonna stripe them, or if we're gonna try to get somebody to do it professionally.
Okay. Anything else for Charles?
Just for FYI, we're under severe thunderstorm warning with hail and 60 mile an hour wind coming to Clinton.
Okay.
I got tone down just a minute, just to let you know.
Okay, yeah, the white goods you don't need, that's a good idea, save some money, brings to, who does it brings to, Water and Sewer Department, we'll hit you.
Alright, guys, what we're reporting here is from January 18th to February 14th, that's the, that's the time we resume the meter. fourteenth, that's the, that's the time we read the meters, it's the time we bill for, so that's, I say last month, that's what we're looking at. Uh, in that month, we fixed four, uh, twenty-two leaks, uh, went over twenty-two work orders and reviewed them and, uh, we were at a water loss of forty percent for the whole overall system, that's Denard, Burn Ridge and, and, uh, and, uh, Clinton, the entire system. Uh, chemicals cost us seventy-five, uh, cents per thousand. Uh, we had gotten that lower, it was a lot, it was higher last month, last month it was ninety-five, but that was with all the extra rain and everything, we, we had to add some extra chemicals, so we got that back down. Uh, just on a couple of other little things, uh, I got a call from Nationwide, which is our insurance, that's who covers us for our insurance. Uh, Nationwide is no longer gonna be doing any kind of municipality insurance, so that really doesn't affect any, anywhere else except for, you know, our street lights, um, across the bridge, just going up sixty-five was, was on there also, but, uh, they're gonna be taking bids through River, that's who we had it through, we had, we went through River, which used to be Standard Insurance and that was Nationwide. Also called and opened up bids from other places, uh, we had, uh, Officher, which only ensures water in municipality systems, they're gonna give a bid, they gave a bid last time, so we are looking into that, uh, we're insured until June and then we, but we just, I got the official call Tuesday and I got the official letter today in the month, so Nationwide is no longer gonna be our insurance, or insurance providers. Uh, as far as the only big project we've got going on right now, and it's really taken a lot of our time, is that North Sixty-five project.
I'm sorry that's happening to you.
Yeah, and I wanna take this time to apologize to any customers, I've gotten calls all day long because they were out longer than they normally are. Uh, we first got the first phone call last night about eight o'clock and we finally found the leak about four o'clock this morning and we finally got the leak fixed about nine o'clock, but then pressing up the entire Denard system and everything, it, it took a while. So, I do apologize for that. A lot of complaints are like, we're saying, this is happening more and more often. I told them, I wish I could tell them it wasn't gonna happen again, but until this highway project is done, it's gonna keep sliding. This is the new line that is breaking. This, it's, it's sliding and it's coming unbilled, it's, it's, it don't flex, so we're trying to work as hard as we can. The contractors actually come and helped us dig it up this morning because we didn't have the equipment for it, we worked all night and got it exposed, but then the whole bank started sliding, so we had to bring in a bigger piece of equipment. We are working on that. Uh, one thing we did discover today, there is an eight inch line that runs on the west side and there's a four inch line that runs on the east side. We were able to open up that four inch line on the east side and actually use that pump station to go ahead and start filling Denard before the leak was actually fixed, so that gives us two options.
It's good.
Before this, that was not, there was only a two inch line that run on the east side, now there's a four inch, it will be better in the, in, in the future. But the highway department, that's what they're gonna do, the, you know, we've hit them up about cans or anything you can do to keep that from sliding. Well, you're talking about the whole, you know, the whole contract, everything is gonna slide, so they are, they did go ahead where the pump station number four is, which, no, no, pump station number four don't mean anything to you, but that actually fuels our big tank on McIntyre that fuels that is our, one of our highest pressure planes. So, that right there was starting to slide and the highway department did step in, engineers stepped in and they're doing what they're called liming, they're taking out the earth, mixing it with lime and then putting it back in and compacting it like ten inches at a time. And it seems to be working, the engineers informed me that they have never done it before, but they're eighty-nine percent sure that it's gonna work.
That's good.
So, but they are taking an effort and I was, that was one thing I was worried about was in that pump station, so.
Worried about in the future?
Actually, in the future, I wanna get rid of that pump station. Right now, you got pump station three and pump station four that have to run simultaneously to fill one tank. It was, when we moved the tank from the tank you see across from Rock Road Park, that doesn't have water in it. The tank that actually fills is way up on the hill, we call it the McIntyre subdivision, it's up there. Whenever that was engineered, the pumps that were put in at three were not big enough to fill that tank, so they put in a piggyback pump station at four. I would like to get rid of that because it is a pain. If, if four trips out, three trips out also, so, I mean, one little jitter on either one, both of them, neither one pump, so it's not, it's a headache.
Yeah, okay.
But no, we can fill it with four now. Now, if that pump station goes out, I can straight line pipe up through there and I can open up and we can, we can bypass and fill.
Well, I appreciate it, I know you all are.
Yeah.
You got a lot on your plate, but don't get, it's not your fault.
I've been a fault a lot with the customers today out that direction, they have, they're getting the blunt on it, you know, I know the customers in town are getting a lot too, but the out of town customer on that front of the route hit pretty hard, so.
Okay, anything else for, well, also, he'll stick around, I won't send any, my apologies on that, I think I had some questions for him and I thought he needed to get home and I sent him home last meeting, but he'll stick around afterwards if you have any water questions for him, unless it just, you know.
If something does happen, we don't need to answer any questions today, my office is always open. Uh, the girls in the office have been informed that if someone calls in there and needs to speak to me directly, then we would have set up a time and they would give you my number. There's business cards in the office, I've, I've got two phones, both numbers are on there, you can call me at any time, so we will address where we can as long as the weather's good.
All right, anything else for, well, thank you. That brings us to, uh, Zoning Department, Tim Clark.
We did the final inspection on the eye clinic, that's David Bedlam's Eye Clinic, that, that did the remodel and expanded that office, we did the final inspection on it last week. Uh, the storage units, uh, they poured part of the footage last week, uh, they're gonna pour some more, uh, weather permitting, they're gonna pour another section of it in the morning. Um, we inspected the, the footage on that this afternoon. The zoning commission met a couple of times last month to, uh, finally finalize the, uh, there's two Verizon cell phone towers going up, uh, the one in question is right by the hospital, so, um, we had to wait on FAA approval, approval from the airport commission and the hospital and we finally got all that done and got it approved and now they're ready, they can actually kinda pull, you know, get a permit to build those towers. Flood plane, uh, Richard and I met with, uh, John Burdell Monday, he's, uh, over Area Six with FEMA, which is our state and several other states and bottom line is the maps that we have seen, that we will use probably in the future, look favorable to the city, that's good. Uh, you know, it could've went the other way, but it looks favorable to us. Uh, the bottom line now is just time, you don't, I think, everybody knows, you don't, uh, you don't rush FEMA, so it is in the works and they're working on it now.
We don't know if we're on this cycle still, do we?
They're doing, I, I'm gonna call her tomorrow, they're doing that class all week, I tried to call her this morning, she didn't answer, so she'll probably be free sometime tomorrow afternoon or a lot. They run in cycles and a year for FEMA is, a cycle is a year.
We think we're on the cycle, so maybe that saves.
We're on the next cycle, which starts first next month.
I don't wanna jinx it.
Yeah, let's don't, you know, we should be. Uh, AMP, um, twenty-eighth of this month, literacy council softball tournament and we start off this year's Park Fest, so last Saturday of this month, should be a lot of activity at the park. Um, uh, the AMP doesn't know it yet, but the Metro Bass Tournament that we hold every year will be June the thirteenth and fourteenth and normally that's a pretty big tournament, fills up our hotels for that weekend. Um, the other AMP, I've got, I've got three positions open on the AMP right now and I'd like for the council, uh, to consider a couple of those. I need to replace Lori Johnson and I would like to replace her with Karen McIntyre, she's the manager of La Rosita's, she has a different last name that I cannot pronounce, but I know her as McIntyre, and for the minute, Alicia, I'll spell that last name for you later. And then Scott Jones has rotated off and I would like to replace him with Amanda South, she's been the manager of Western Sizzling for a very long time.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve Karen.
I like the motion.
McIntyre, Amanda South, these positions.
Second.
Any other discussion? Ask for a roll call.
Barnes?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Have you got someone in mind for that other position?